Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. My name is Sina Nejad. I have the honor of chairing the Planning and Zoning Commission. Along with my able commissioners, we welcome you to September 18, 2023 meeting. If you please be kind enough to silence your cell phone so it doesn't wake up the rest of us, and then we're going to get started. If you would, please call the roll.
Ms. Nejad?
Here.
Commissioner Jabar, absent. Commissioner Jabeel?
Present.
Commissioner Jabeel?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Macon?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola?
Here.
Commissioner Seneca?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Harris? Alternate Commissioner Sorrell? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a quorum, and the members of the commission were sent the minutes of the last meeting. I would entertain the motion for approval and/or if you have any proposed changes.
I still have one.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're going to get started with our first case, PZ 2023-316, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Access Surveyors has requested approval for a replat of Lot 12, Block 12, Annie T. Warren subdivision into lots 1 and 2, Herrera Heights addition. Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to divide a single lot into two residential lots. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, all new lots, lot lines comply with building setback required in Section 28.03.024 District Area and Height Regulations. Staff sent 13 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. And I do believe that the applicant is in the audience. On your screen, you'll see the aerial and zoning map of the property. This is the plat. So they're taking the one large residential lot and dividing it into two.
Okay, is the applicant in the audience?
How are you, sir?
I'm well, how are you?
Very well. If you please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
I'm in Beaumont, Texas, located at 1125. Code in Beaumont, Texas, 713. Thank you, staff, for doing everything you do. I appreciate that. It's a simple split of the property, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to provide information.
So these are going to be, each one of them is going to be 61 feet by almost 500 some odd feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Any questions for Mr. Bracken?
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We opened the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain the motion.
Make a motion to approve, file PZ 2023-316.
I have a motion. Who has a second?
I have a motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any discussion in the matter?
Would you like to? Sorry, who has a second, please?
Mr. Seneca.
Thank you.
Would you like to approve with or without the conditions?
With the conditions.
Yes. That's with the condition, thank you.
Yeah, the motion was with the condition. All right, so we have the second, and any discussion? Nope? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thanks. We're going to go to PZ 2023-326.
Zach Rowe of Levin's Engineering and Design requests approval to the preliminary plat of the Garden subdivision. The development is located east of 3920 West Cardinal with an outlet onto Warren Street. It will have 30 residential lots and common areas dedicated to a detention pond, tennis court, basketball court, walking trail, and playground. This development was brought to commission once before as a cluster housing development to accommodate townhomes and also single-family dwellings. However, the developer decided they wanted to do single-family dwellings only. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, fire hydrants must be a maximum of 500 feet apart per 2021 International Fire Code. Number two, water mains located between two lots must be cased and a 10-foot exclusive waterline easement shall be dedicated. If the water main is not cased, a 20-foot exclusive waterline easement must be dedicated. On the screen, you'll see the area intended for the subdivision. This is the preliminary plat.
And there's conditions three, four, and five?
One moment. Number three, shall provide street locations and streetlight symbols to the legend of the final plat. Number four, provide secondary drainage system for overload flow up to 100-year on all drainage plans and construction plans, and that shall include 10-year and 100-year HDLs. Number five, change the note on number nine of the plat to state the perpetual maintenance of all common areas and reserves shall be the responsibility of the property owners.
So does this mean that, would they have garbage service in there?
Yes, sir, they should. It's still going to be a street dedicated to the city.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady? Mr. Rowe?
Zach Rowe with Levin's Engineering and Design. Address is 3250 East Tex Freeway.
Mr. Rowe, you have any additional information that you'd like to give us?
No, sir.
Do you agree with the conditions that we have imposed on this project?
Yes, sir, we'll comply with the conditions.
You review them, all the five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Rowe? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On case PZ 2023-326, we have heard from the city and also the applicant. He does understand the five conditions imposed by the city, and I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with the five conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Demi, you go like this, we can go home on time. Good. PZ 2023-361.
Jeremiah Brammer has requested preliminary plat approval of Windamere subdivision, Section 5. This is a five-acre development that will extend Windmeadow Drive and consists of 21 residential lots. All lots meet the requirement for the residential lot requirements. Water and sewer will be provided by an extension of the city's facilities. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the sanitary sewer line is installed per Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Regulations. Manholes should be spaced at a maximum of 500 feet per pipe, 6 to 15 inches in diameter. Manholes must be installed at all points of change in alignment grade or nominal diameter. Number two, eliminate the street light adjacent to lots 12 and 13, Block 2, property line. Number three, shall add a note on the final plat to state temporary erosion controls, control measures must remain in place until permanent measures are established. Number four, shall add note on final plat to state all property owners will be required to construct four-foot concrete sidewalk adjacent to the street located four feet from the back of curb at street intersections if applicable. Sidewalks are to include construction of a five-foot wide landing to tie in with concrete access ramps. If any lot is not developed within five years of recordation of the final plat, the current owner shall construct the sidewalk. This is an aerial photograph of the zoning map. You can see that it extends off of Windmeadow, and then Windcastle is to the south. This is the plat, and I do believe the applicant is present and the owner.
The applicant's in the audience? It's okay, you can come up.
My name is Bernardino Tristan with Fitz and Shipman here in Beaumont, 1405 Cornerstone Court. The applicant is here, but I'm here to answer any questions that may pertain to this project.
Do you understand the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We heard from the staff and also the applicant. I would entertain the motion.
I move to approve PZ 2023-361 with the four conditions.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Demi, before we continue on the previous case, 326 with Mr. Rowe, did we have sidewalks in that subdivision?
Let me pull out the larger map.
Please do. I want to make sure we're consistent.
Yes, sir, field note five.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're up to PZ 2023-365, correct?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Brayden Gott has requested approval of a replat of lots 1 through 10, Block 4, Carver Terrace, Carver Terrace addition into lots 1A, 8B, 9B, and 10B, Block 4, Carver Terrace addition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. It should be noted the northern portion of the cul-de-sac was abandoned by the owner in 2017. The intent of the plat is to adjust lot lines to accommodate a new home for the property owner's family. Staff recommends approval of the request. We did send 22 property owner notices and received four in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, this is the aerial photography of the area to be replatted, and this is the replat. I do believe that the applicant is present.
This doesn't affect that cul-de-sac in the back, right?
No, because it was abandoned back in 2017.
Okay, great, great. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, and give us any additional information you might have.
My name's Brayden Gott. I'm with Fitz and Shipman, 1405 Cornerstone Court in Beaumont, and I'm just here to answer any questions that might be needed.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? Nope? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to start the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We have heard from the staff and also the applicant, and there's no public additional comments, so I would entertain the motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion in the matter? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Thank you very much. This concludes the planning portion of the meeting today. Now, we're going to have the joint meeting with the City Council, and Honorable Roy West is going to get us started. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. We have a roll call.
Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner is absent. Councilmember Felschah?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Present.
Councilmember Neeld?
Present.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. This is a joint meeting with, meeting with quorums of both City Council and Planning Commission. The only opportunity to speak on the islands is today. The Planning Commission will make recommendations to the City Council. The items will be heard today, will come before City Council in two to three weeks for our decision. There will not be any public hearing on the islands if the City Council leaves. Again, the only public hearing will be today. Thank you for coming. Turning the back over to the Planning Commission's chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 2021-243.
All right. Scott Holloman and the heirs of A.J. Fasulo estate have requested the city of Beaumont to accept maintenance of the private drive east of West Calder Road and north of Baker Road and its infrastructure. The city recently adopted a process for conversion of private streets and other infrastructure to public ownership and maintenance. Also attached is an analysis of the condition of the existing private infrastructure conducted by Public Works Department. In 2021, engineering conduct a survey and analysis of the streets and drainage infrastructure. They found at the time that the entire pavement is in very poor condition and requires a full rehabilitation. The ditches have been poorly maintained and not graded properly to drain with the driveway culverts that were not set properly. The condition of water and sewer lines was unknown. At the October 2021 Planning Commission meeting, after some discussion, the commission recommend, requested a more thorough investigation of the drainage, water, and sewer situation, and minimum improvements needed for acceptance of the neighborhood. In the following months, engineering did investigate the requested data, and this is what they found, immediate needs. The water system requires replacement either before or immediately after acceptance of the road's right-ofways. This is to improve fire protection to the development and to eliminate a multitude of services running from an extensive bank of meters in the West Calder right-ofway. The current cost estimate is $187,046 to install water mains, service connections, water meters, and fire hydrants through city, through city staff. Urgent work, the city would eventually need to set four manholes on the sanitary sewer system to provide access to the lines for inspection and cleaning. Estimated cost, if performed by city staff, is $26,692. Remaining work, the remaining work would be addressed during normal prioritization of scheduled workload and are listed in no specific order. First, estimated cost of excavation of the roadside ditches, installing driveway culverts to grade, rehabilitation of the asphalt roads, et cetera, is approximately $495,100. Replacement of sewer main lines, estimated cost if performed by city staff is $100,500. It is an estimated grand total of $809,338, more or less, to bring the current conditions to the standard, to standard if the streets and infrastructure are to be accepted and work to be performed by city staff. The grand total may increase if work is to be performed through a contractor. The fire department reviewed the site, and the fire department has concerns about the width and load limits of the current private street. City streets must have a 75,000-pound load limit rating and be wired, wide enough for a fire apparatus. A majority of these streets are narrow, being approximately 10 feet to 12 feet wide. Solid waste provides garbage services to 2425 West Calder Road. If the city provides solid waste services, improvements to the road will be required to maintain the weight of the garbage trucks. As such, staff recommends denial due to the following reasons of narrow width of streets, lack of fire hydrants along the streets, load limit concerns, surveying issues, and rehabilitation costs. Should Planning Commission choose to approve the request, staff would recommend with the following condition, that a plat be produced by a licensed surveyor, and it must be submitted to the planning office prior to acceptance of, prior to final acceptance of the streets and infrastructure. We did send out 19 owner notices, and we received one in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen is the area that they've proposed for the city to accept for the roads and the This is a aerial photography of what exists out there, overhead. This is a picture looking down the first road. You can see that it is a private drive. This is further into the private drive. This is on the other side, and again, further into the drive. And these are the water meters that are out on West Calder right-ofway. There is another set further to the west.
Any questions for Demi?
Is there going to be a sidewalk issue required because this is an older place or no?
No.
No sidewalks?
No.
Okay.
It would be on your newer subdivisions.
Okay, I just wanted to check because we watched that closely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holloman? Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you.
Very well. You're the nice gentleman that came and gave a really good presentation last time, right?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I look forward to another one. Go ahead.
So, it was nice to-
Forgive me, your name and address for the-
Scott Holloman, 2499 West Calder Road, Beaumont, Texas. I represent 12 residents and a couple of vacant lots at the A.J. Fasulo estate. It was actually nice to see the subdivision, how it's supposed to work when they come up and they have a preliminary, and everybody goes, "Yeah, let's do it, move on with these conditions." However, none of us have a time machine. A.J. Fasulo did this 30, 40 years ago. No one held him to these standards, you know what I mean? So, we don't own the roads, so we really have no control over what happens, other than we pay our taxes to the city and we, we expect the city to provide services for those taxes. And the problems that we've had have been going on, and they're getting worse. And the problem is, is that not only are we going to suffer with the drainage issues, the surrounding areas are starting to suffer as well, okay? Because there is no drainage. It's, it's a bowl, is what it is. And when it pours over into that back ditch which runs along the east side of our property, it starts to go into other parts of the Fig Acres addition, is what we would call it. This property has been neglected for over 60 years. Meanwhile, we still continue to pay all our taxes out there. We don't have any control over what A.J. Fasulo and the city of Beaumont did 40, 50 years ago, and they continue to issue us permits to build homes out there without any warnings whatsoever that, hey, you're going into a legal subdivision. First time I ever heard that was when we started trying to get the city to take the roads over. So I bought my house in 2017 and was given no warning whatsoever. In fact, I was told the city is about to take the roads over and they're going to start doing maintenance on them. That's what I was told when I bought my house. So, there are other roads in the city of Beaumont that are 10 to 12 foot wide that have been taken over by the city. I have, I've got proof of that now. They took them over and they repaved them, and now they repave them every three or four years, you know? And that's really all we're asking for. We're, we, it doesn't really matter to us about, you know, the garbage cans being at the end of the road, even though it's a nuisance because you got 12 of them down there, you know? So, when you come home, where your garbage can was left is now in the ditch or in the road. You got to get out and move it to get into our drive, you know? Those are the small issues that everybody deals with in any neighborhood, you know what I mean? But the real threat of somebody flooding out there is, it's, it's getting, it's getting to the point where it's inevitable. It's not just, maybe it'll happen, it's gonna happen, you know? And all we're asking for is some help, and as far as, I know we've discussed this before, maybe financing the problem and the residents pay for that later. We've been paying for it for 60 years, and it hasn't been done yet. So, to finance it, you're going to put even more of a hardship on several people out there that are retired, that don't have the income. They don't have the means to pay even more in taxes. And if the city comes out there and fixes the roads and ditches, and it looks nice and everything is taken care of, guess what? Our property tax goes up. So now we're paying more on top of financing to have it fixed. Long-term, the only ones that can really benefit from this, I mean, I'll be there another 30, 40 years, and then I'll be passed on, but the city of Beaumont will still be collecting taxes on it. So they're really the beneficiaries here, you know? Because the property taxes are going to go up, because the property value is going to go up. We all know that. That's all I had. I'm willing to do anything, help out in any way that I can, but I've done all the research. This has been three years' worth of work. I also work 80 hours a week, so it's a tough job, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Hang on a minute. Any, any questions for the gentleman?
I have a comment. Mr. Holloman?
Yes, sir.
We thank you for your time and your effort and your hard work over the-
I appreciate it.
It is a, and I feel your frustration.
Yeah, it's very frustrating.
It is a major concern because it's where you live?
Yes, sir.
And we're family here in Beaumont?
Yes, sir.
And you're family.
Thank you.
And it's unfortunate. I am for a solution to this, and I'm, I'm willing to work with the, with the committee to find a solution and with the council to find a solution.
I would like to add one, one thing to it. There's been several mention of the sewer lines that need to be redone in that neighborhood, and it's somewhere 100, and I forget what the exact figure was. There's already a six-inch main drainage line in there, and there are, it's connected to every home out there. So, that, that is something that wouldn't have to be done. That would be something that could be taken off of that amount.
Well, Mr. Holloman, if we approve this, it's going to go to the City Council?
Sure.
And my crystal ball says nobody's going to volunteer that kind of money, right? And it appears to me that, and the council can stop me if this gets into advice to the, to the applicant, but it appears to me that the most economical way is to finance privately the street repairs than anything else. I'm, I'm like my, my fellow commissioner, I'll feel for you, but you can do this a lot less expensive than the city can.
But they won't let me do it.
It's your street, isn't it?
It has to meet their codes when I go to do it.
Counselor? Isn't this his private street?
It is, it's a private road, but it would still have to be met and updated to city codes when you do the construction work. They would still need to bring it up to code.
And can he ask for a variance?
At that point, they'd be, they would be performing the work as a developer at that point, so they would meet the same requirements as a developer.
I understand, but can he ask for a variance? Can he go to the Board of Adjustment?
So, it wouldn't be the Board of Adjustment in this stance. I could, I'll ask on engineering as they're in here, but Board of Adjustment oversees Chapter 28. This is within Chapter 26 for the road rehabilitation. So this could either come to Planning Commission or council, it's just how the ordinance reads.
So, can he come back and propose fixing the street himself, and we can vote on it, right?
I'll call on engineering.
I thought he's got to help this fellow.
See, that was the issue, is when I looked for a contractor.
So, Molly, a city engineer, was saying that just like any other private drive, they would pull a permit, and then she would review. And if they needed a waiver of sorts, then, then they'd probably have to come to council.
So it goes to planning and then go to the council, right? Or just the council?
I believe it would go to council, but I can look for sure and, and get back to you guys on that.
The, the, the duality here is whether or not, like, depending on what the work they're trying to do and the permit that's required, whether or not, depending on how it's drafted in the, in the ordinance in the chapter, whether or not it comes directly to you or goes directly to council.
Okay.
That's, that's the thing, depending on the work that's performed and the request that's asked, depends on whether or not it comes to you versus council.
It seems like you're going to come and see me for a third time.
Well, and, and that's, the, the problem was, is I actually looked for a contractor to get some kind of numbers just so that I could bring here, and-
Look-
They don't want to mess with the city.
Talk to your city councilman. Talk to your city councilman and let's find a contractor, let's, let's think about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm sorry you're going through this process, but I hope that amongst all of us, we can find a solution to your problem.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right. Let's see where I'm at. So, we basically going to deny this, I guess. Well, I'm sorry, we're going to vote on it.
No, you're going to ask if there's anyone else who'd like to speak for or against it.
Well, you already asked it. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Happy?
Very.
Thank you. So, we're going to continue on. We have heard from the, from the applicant and also, there are no public comments. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I've got a question, though. Staff recommended, or made this comment. Should Planning Commission choose to approve the request, staff would recommend the following. A plat produced by a licensed surveyor must be submitted to the planning office prior to final acceptance. So, does that need to go into place before they come back? We deny it, or how's that?
So, that would be a condition-
Clarify that?
That would be a condition of approval. So, essentially what would mean is, is that your approval wouldn't go into effect into those conditions.
Until that's done.
It's just like another condition that y'all would add when you say with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
It's the same.
It's going to go to the city council.
Correct.
Question on that, then?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, is, is the survey or the replat needed before he can get the permit?
So, if, in that regard, it's a condition, so that would be a condition of approval. So, that would be something that he would have to do and before the city would accept it, if that was what y'all chose to do. And if he was doing, if you're asking whether or not he would need to be, do that prior to commencing any private work, then that would be a decision between him and his contractor, or whatever contractor they chose to do, to work with.
So, it, I'm trying to get an understanding that. According to, if it was approved, that, that was the condition?
Yes.
He would need that anyway to move forward?
So, if you guys choose to accept, the condition says, "You accept with the following conditions" that he, that, that a survey be provided. That's completely and separately apart from if he chose to do, to engage with a private contractor. At that point, it would be whatever the private contractor required in order to do the work and then whatever the city required in order to permit the work. It's two separate things.
Okay.
Which, which means that for us to approve it, it needs the survey, then he's going to go to the city council to give him $800,000,000, right? Okay. So, we all understand what's going on. Perfect.
What else?
And, yes, sir?
It would be, it would be a requirement for the city for acceptance. What I'm saying is, is that the condition today for acceptance is that they provide a survey prior to official acceptance. If they chose to go another route and do the work privately, it would be whatever requirements were required by their private contractor and then whatever the city would require in order to permit it. At that point, it would be as if they were operating as a developer. So, it's a completely different process at that point.
So, is it ripe for a decision today, or should it be tabled until they pursue?
Honestly, it all depends. It could go either way. So, if the commission decides to accept with the surveyor, they would need to go out and get a survey. If they didn't do that, then they would fail to meet the conditions. Someone is not happy about that. But they, if, then it would, it would fail to be approved because they failed to meet the conditions and so then that approval will be withdrawn. If the council, commission decided to deny the application and they chose to move forward with a private contractor, then they would need to, to follow those different steps. So, it's two roads at play here.
May I, may I summarize this one more time? Do you mind?
Please do.
Okay. If, if we approve this, before we approve it, we need the survey.
Right.
We're going to, he's going to get a survey, we approve it, then he's going to go as a condition. Then he's going to go to the city asking for all that money. Otherwise, he has the right, if we, he has the right to come back and go to the city and still has to gain approval for varying from the city requirements to put his own private street.
It's, it's with his own private contractor.
Even though it's a private street, you gotta do that?
He's going to have to go to the city council and he's going to have to get approval because-
But he's not private.
But it's the ordinance, right? Okay. So, we're all good. I would say, in light of what the commissioner gets was talking, maybe the best, the best help that we can give the gentleman is to table this.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion to table the case until further notice.
I second.
Yeah.
No?
So, if you're going to table, you need to give a date. So, you're going to further notice as in, until you get additional information?
Can we give-
Until next meeting, further notice to meetings?
Uh, a table for up to six months.
For the purpose of additional information?
For the purpose of additional information from the, the owners.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
I'm going to be really good at this after you get through with me, you know it? He, he's, he's going to go out and he's going to figure out if he can do this privately and then he's going to go ask for, for a variance to build his own street. Otherwise, he's going to have to come up with a million bucks, or the city has to come up with a million bucks. Is everybody happy? I made a motion to table this for up to six months, until the, the owners come back without paying any fees to the city.
Yeah.
And then we're going to continue.
Second, second motion. Second.
You have seconded it. Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mayor, are you smiling or not? Great. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And in opposition? Ayes have it. Folks, our purpose in life is to be able to help the citizens and that's the best we could come up with today. We're going to go to PZ 2023-233.
Real quick, I will say IT is coming down to try to fix the PowerPoint, but in the meantime, we'll walk around with the computer to show you guys.
Is that what blew up? Okay.
It shut it everything down.
Oh.
Oh, there we go. Hold on, there we go, okay. Okay. Nancy Resendez requests approval for a rezoning of the property located at 1845 South Major. She wishes to go from residential single-family to GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling Zoning District. The property abuts GCMD 2 zoning district and is near the intersection of Major Drive and Washington Boulevard, which are two major arterial streets. Common planning practices encourage commercial uses along arterial and collector streets. However, this site abuts residentially zoned property on the east, south, and west sides of the property. Therefore, staff, staff recommends approval of a rezoning from RS to GCMD 2. This district would require a specific use permit for any commercial use affording neighboring properties the benefit of an additional notification and public hearing before such use could be established on the property. The owners are selling this property contingent upon the results of this case. Staff sent 38 property owner notices and received five in favor and two in opposition. In favor states, please approve for potential buyer of this property before another person passes away and more heirs have to be added. Opposition states, "When we built our home, we were in a flood zone and had to build our home on a hill, so our privacy is of concern. We object to any commercial or multifamily development behind our home. If Planning Commission and council decide to approve, we would highly suggest a 12-foot or higher privacy fence be required as well as a five-to-10-foot natural buffer between our property and applicant's property. Please let the record reflect, reflect that we are totally against high-rise or multi-level apartments or condos and no to restaurants." On your screens, this, the area outlined in red is considered for GCMD. This is aerial photography of the site. This is the subject property. To the south. Southwest. West. Northwest. And to the north. I believe the applicant is present.
Any questions for Demi?
Could you go back to, I wanted to see, to the, where the residence is that wants the 12-foot fence?
Okay, so, it's this residence right here. I'm sorry. This residence right here that would like the bordering property line to have a buffer.
Just on that one side?
Right, and so our building, or our development regulations would require a natural buffer, or not a natural buffer, but a, at minimum, a 10-foot buffer along this rear property line, abutting the residential single-family property zone, or zoning district. And in between there, there would have to be trees and an eight-foot wood fence or masonry fence.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Fantastic.
Thank y'all for being here. I've been trying to do this since June.
Well, we're here now, so if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Resendez. I live at 10310 Dominion Ranch Drive in Port Arthur, Texas, 77640.
Great. Would you tell us what is it that you're about to do?
I am the executor of an estate for Ms. Haltem. Over 100 years ago, the Haltem family, the Moore family, and the Morgan family purchased almost all of that property. This is all that's left. I have found all 18 heirs, because it has trickled down to descendant after descendant. They're all in agreement, y'all have the paperwork. It's been a very long, two-year ordeal, but that we have a buyer that wants to buy it. We're supposed to sign on September 29th because we kept moving the date. And apparently now it's going to be later because we have to go in front of council. But, we can do that. But, they're all in agreement, they are the heirs. I'm just an executor of Ms. Haltem's estate. Her husband was one of the grandchildren, he's passed away. And since I've been doing this for two years, two more of the Haltem brothers have passed and it's trickled into five more people, so we're up to 18. And I thought T.W. Moke was going to be here today. He's, he's the oldest at 93, I think he said. So, they trickle from 93 to, I think I'm the youngest working on the estate, so.
And what is it you're trying to do with this property?
I have a buyer who wants to build a hair salon and a-
Donut shop, is that?
She wants to do a bakery and a hair salon. And a coffee shop.
Okay.
That's Linda Parks, she's the real estate agent.
You're asking for a GCMD, right?
Correct, that's what Adina, when I started with her, that's what she recommended.
Okay. All right, and first of all, Mrs. Resendez, I'm sorry that you had to wait so long to get to us, but I will tell you, it's worth it because we're going to help you.
Thank you.
Here's, here's the thing. What if your buyer changes his mind and put a big old gas station there with a whole bunch of gaming stuff? What are you going to tell the neighbors?
Oh, I have no idea. Because I filled out-
No, no, that's good.
Okay.
That's good.
I mean, I have no idea. I just, they asked me what she wanted to do. Linda Parks is a real estate agent dealing with the lady, so can they change their mind like that?
Okay, all right, no problem. Fantastic. I, I think we have a solution for you. Any questions for the lady? Nope? Okay. We might be able to help you if everybody agrees with going to a GCMD 2. That way, all you have to do is to come and ask or declare what is it that you're going to do and they approve it and then you go from there, okay? Something that's conducive to the, to the neighborhood. With that said, any questions for the lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't know if any of the others, did you sign it and you don't want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir? Please come by, introduce yourself so we get to know you and then we'll answer your question.
Thanks, George Morgan.
Mr. Morgan, what is your address, please?
Well, right now, I live in Houston, 112022 Laneview Drive, Houston, Texas. We just moved there.
Fantastic.
My grandfather was one of the ones who originally bought the property. But, I, I do have a question regarding your question. If, if we sell to the, to the buyer, okay, she comes in and she wants to do something else, wouldn't that be regulated by what, she has to go through the permitting process and according to, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. She would be restricted from doing that, okay? Is that correct or not?
Not if it's GCMD. If it's GCMD 2, then she has to come back and ask for compatibility.
Okay, okay, all right.
That's the, not that she can't do it, it just has to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
Donut shop, bakery, whatever they want to do is, most likely, there is no harm to the neighborhood.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We closed the public hearing. We have heard from the applicant, we heard from the city, and we are concerned about the, the application of the site. So, with that, I guess I can make a motion.
Yeah, and change it.
I would make a motion to approve a GCMD 2, so the applicant or the buyer, future buyer, can come in front of the council and declare their use of the property. That is my motion.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go to PZ 2023315.
Kendrick Martin requests a rezone to a .15 acre portion of property located just south of 2315 Russ Street. The property currently has split zones of residential multifamily and residential single-family. The intent is to have the entire lot zoned as residential multifamily highest density to develop a 16-unit apartment. The comprehensive plan of Beaumont shows this property to be within the conservation and revitalization area. These areas are built-up areas where a significant portion of the area is experiencing influences such, such as incompatible land uses, dilapidated infrastructure, and a decline in population and in the number of housing units and businesses. Immediate actions are needed to prevent continued deterioration and to reverse and repair those conditions. This request appears to be in line with our comprehensive plan and a viable development plan to aid growth to this area. As such, staff recommends approval of this request. We sent 22 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is the area with residential single, single-family zoning. They would like to bring it to RMH, which is what's directly south of that, that outlined area. Aerial photography without the zoning layer. This is the property and, or subject property and south. Property further south, that's a railroad. Property to the east. To the north. And to the west. I do believe the applicant is present. He was running late earlier.
Any questions for Demi? Good afternoon. You, you sound like you're the applicant, right? All right. I'm glad we woke you up, buddy. Come over here. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Kendrick Martin. I'm at 123 Lindsay Street in Salisbury, Texas, 77656.
Great. Mr. Morgan, tell us what is your, what is it you're about to do?
We're trying to build a 16-unit apartment complex in the area. And we're not able to do that because part of it is residential and the rest of it is RMH.
57 feet by 148, I'm sure you've done your homework and you can fit him, right?
Yes.
The number of parkings that required and all that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the gentleman? Any questions for the gentleman?
There going to be a two-story or one-story?
Two at the moment. We're still trying to work out the kinks. Our blueprints aren't ready yet.
And you bought the property or you're about...
Yes, we purchased the property from Habitat of Humanitarian.
Okay. Great. Any questions? Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So just that size, that's Mark. Were you planning on acquiring the rest of this property?
No, it's all ours. It's just two zones. It's residential and...
So you already own the other part?
We own all of it. It's one...
Just want to add to it.
Yes. It was a park there decades ago.
That's where I was puzzled because 54 feet, you couldn't fit much stuff in there.
No, no, it's the whole thing.
You own the rest of it to the corner. Okay.
So we own all of that to the south of it, the RMH, yes.
Yeah, that makes me more comfortable.
To be clear, it is all one property. It's just the northern quarter of it is residential, single-family. So the property itself has split zoning.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Good luck to you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Please. How are you this afternoon, sir? Fantastic. If you would state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Danny Fontenot, 2295 Russ. That's next door to my property.
Yes, sir.
As he said before, it was an old park, 26, 28 years ago. But the problem is that I've already talked to all the rest of the neighbors. We're all old and retired. And it's a 90-degree curve. Anything you put up, you won't be able to see the turn to make the curve. We have lots of people always going off Smart Street where it goes into 7th, run right off into the woods. Any more blockage from apartment complex or fence, going to be more wrecks. And I have a few more things here. And it's a pretty busy thoroughfare as it is, being as narrow as it is. Two cars fit, two pickup trucks barely make it. And, let's see. And there's a lot of sewer stuff on that property for those four houses right there on the other, on the north side of that property. On his northwest corner of that piece of property he's got is a big sewer drain, and the city has to go through the property and work on it constantly because of the four houses. I guess all that would be taken care of if they want to build their thing, but the 90-degree curve, and as quiet as we have the neighborhood now, we don't want another, don't need an apartment complex there. We're more than happy to let him build a house or a couple of houses. It's big enough. And this is my second time to speak on this piece of property. First time was after Harvey, when they wanted to put trailers there for the FEMA people. And that was denied. And I hope this is denied too. Let them come up with some other plan instead of apartment complexes.
All right, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? All right, Mr. Martin. You had... Yeah, come forward, please. You had a negative comment about blocking the corner of the street and causing accidents. Do you have anything to say?
We can try to work around...
Other than the fact that there is a building setback on both sides, so your buildings would be inside the property?
Yes, they would be inside. We can try to work around that, but I mean, we still have in mind to build the apartment complex there.
And you understand about the sewer line that's in the back?
Yes.
Most likely there is a easement for that, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure you have a chance to rebut on that one.
Okay, no problem.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We now close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and the applicant. We also heard from the owner and the, I'm sorry, the neighbors and the rebuttal from the applicant. With that, I would entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion for PZ 2023315. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition?
No.
One opposition. Thank you, sir. The ayes have it. We're going to go to PZ 2023348.
Daniel Jeans of the House Center is requesting approval of an amended specific use permit to allow a residential care facility located at 1094 to 1098 Cottonwood Street. This proposal was originally presented at the March 2023 Planning Commission to develop a two-story dormitory office space and parking lot for the House Center. However, Mr. Jeans would like to develop a one-story dormitory office space and parking lot. Such change has expanded the building to be closer towards the northern residences, thus necessitating an amended SUP. The House Center is a facility offering room and board for men with substance abuse issues. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire code requirements. Number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utility for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number three, the sanitary sewer line shall be tied to the city line located in the alleyway or to Cottonwood Street. And number four, the existing water meter located in the proposed driveway along Cable must be moved or abandoned. We sent 27 property owner notices and received zero in favor and two in opposition. Opposition states we have sex offenders on Gulf Street and probation on Cable Street. We do not wish another halfway house in this neighborhood. On your screens, the area outlined in red is the area for, or considered for the amended specific use permit. Aerial photography without the zoning layer. Site plan. This is the subject property. Property to the south. Behind that tree, there is another residence. East. To the north. And to the west. I believe we have the applicant present.
Great. Mr. Jeans? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Glad to be here. Thanks for having us. Daniel Jeans, Executive Director of the House Center, 2509... 77703.
All right, Mr. Jeans, you've been here before, and we approved the previous plans, from what I understand.
Yes, sir.
What is it that you're doing different this time?
Two things. One is the aesthetics of the neighborhood. There's no two-story buildings around. And so for the aesthetics reason, we went to the one-story. The most pressing thing was budget. The budget to a two-story to a one-story was dramatically greater than what we had budgeted. By going to a one-story, we do not have to finance anything. We have all the funds available to begin work now.
All right. Any questions for the gentleman?
Are you putting the same space that was in the two-story into one-story and just expanding the...
Actually, it's going to be square footage a little bit smaller. We cut back a room or so to make it fit. We got our builders and my engineer here also. If you need, that'd be a question for them, you think?
No, just looking at...
We're not looking to put a whole bunch of people there. We're just trying to make a more modern facility from what we have. And it's just the aesthetics and the overall appearance. And also, there was another thing about security. One-story, it's a lot easier with floodlights and cameras than two-story. And the neighbor right behind me, I talked to him, and he was fine with either way, but we're going to go with the one-story.
How many residents are you looking at?
I think with this, what they told us before, is 42 total on it, based on the square footage of the lot. We don't plan on having 42, but that's what they told us could be there.
Okay, thank you.
So these are dormitory rooms, right?
It'd be like a regular bedroom, yes, sir, with two cots in them or two bunks in them. No kitchen facility or anything like that. That's going to stay across the street in our main facility.
Okay, I'll count 14 rooms in here. Now, the... Okay, it's, the entrance is facing Cable Street, right?
We'll have one coming off Cable, and the exit, I believe, is off of Cottonwood existing.
Okay. I'm not sure if that's... Are you going to have a garbage truck coming picking up a canister?
No, that's across the street where we have the garbage cans across the street.
Okay.
And we're going to have very minimal trash from that facility.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman?
Dan, tell us a little bit about the population that you serve and the folks that you've helped in the past.
30 years ago, the man that founded the House Center had a vision to convert two crack houses that were used as drug houses into a safe haven for people to get their lives together. We run a background check on every applicant. We have no aggravated crimes, no crimes against the elderly or the children, no sex offenders. We have to take care of the neighborhood. We have the kids coming over there that we repair bikes and give bikes out to a lot of single families, a lot of elderly people we take care of. And so we have to protect them first and foremost. Everyone's required, obviously, to stay clean and sober. We do our own drug testing, okay? We do work with area probation officers and different entities in the court system to try to help guys get their life turned back around. Very successfully this year, I wasn't going to come, I'll probably come to the end of the year to counsel and give a end-of-the-year status of the House Center, but so far this year, we've had 14 successful completions of guys coming in, getting their lives together, and moving out on their own.
That's great.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to open the floor to the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? The gentleman in the back first, and then we'll go to the lady here. And then we'll go to this other gentleman. Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Delbert Chapman, Sr., and my address, 2471 Grand Street, Beaumont, Texas, 7703. Seems like he got good intentions, but what it seems to me is that he's making a halfway house complex out of the area. I mean, he telling you that everything's all, that he take care of the seniors in the area. But my mom's 90 years old. I bet he don't know her name. Anyway, I don't know how many people has been arrested from his facility, but he ain't told us that. He ain't tell us how many people has been went astray from his facilities. He ain't told us that. He told us the sizes of his rooms, which is basically two bunks in a square wall. That sounds like a jail cell. That could be intimidating to some people and cause them to go off. He say they have to have drug testing, which means they must have a dependency on some type of drugs. And how can he guarantee the residents of that area that they won't go off? So that's a concern, and I think that should be considered and maybe delayed to some more investigation until his success rate is complete. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. The lady in the back? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Martha Simeon, 5745 Springdale, Beaumont, Texas, 77708. Business owner at 2506 Magnolia Avenue, 2516, and also 2495. Not in my backyard. How many more halfway houses did you want in this community? Who sets the rules and regulations? You have four halfway houses within a block of this community. How many more? How many more? Majority of those people who own their property are tenants. They're not homeowners. We are a business owner. We've been there for over 60-plus years. Fortunately, we were not aware of some things I'm concerned. But my mother owned the business, and I'm in the process of moving along with this process, and it's enough. It's enough. Who determines in this part of community, drug dealers, crack cocaine? You want to say this is what we are set for, and we have been a business for that many years? And not only that, we keep this community safe and sound. We provide lighting. We pay energy every month diligently to cover all the areas of our property, to keep it safe. And undercover, Mr. Jean has gone to resident, the property behind us. We had no idea he had purchased that for a halfway house. We have helped so many of the halfway individuals who has gone from Y Street all the way up to Live Oak, who didn't have food, who didn't have a lot of things. We, as a community, has reached out. We own these businesses. We pay for the security. The city doesn't. We do. We help prepare the sidewalks for safety for them. It's enough. Who determines how many halfway houses in our community? Our community is not designed for that. We cannot, as a business owner, if I want a Walgreens to come and buy my property, they're not going to do it. You have one on Guff, you have one on Live Oak in Linton, you have one on Cable in Cottonwood, and now you have one Cottonwood and... Come on, that's enough. We're not here, true. Our bad because we didn't find out about planning and zoning, but I'm here. I'm awake. It's, I'm aware.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Louis Bryant, 2440 Cable Avenue in Beaumont. This would be my third visit before this committee, this planning commission. And I wanted to ask the young lady, can she bring up the photos one more time that she... And I'll just tell you where to stop it. Right there. My property is immediately behind that. I would say our backyards were joined together. That's how close I would be to that facility in a residential setting. Our property, even at the hearing of these halfway houses that the lady just mentioned, our property values are diminishing rapidly. Nobody will buy in that area. I own property in the Belair addition of Beaumont out by Royget School and would be in a position to have sold mine, rented, or whatever. But that property that I am at, no. But the potential, I mean, the... The potential of someone even renting or buying that close to those type of facilities from Guff all the way up to Magnolia. At Guff and Live Oak, they house sexual offenders. The lady that just spoke, she mentioned Linton and Live Oak. That's another halfway house. Now, this one would take up from three blocks of Cottonwood, from Forest, all the way back up to Magnolia Street. That's a wide area, okay? That's a very wide area of both sides of that street right there. Okay, so we're looking at, as residents living out there, having to deal with this. The last time I spoke to this committee, he said they are all volunteers. And I said, I'm sure this is some type of something to do with parole assignment or something. But today it comes out that he speaks with parole, parolees, or, you know, those that's on parole. So that has to be some, that they're on some type of assignment, requiring them to be there for whatever crimes they have committed, whatever that is. So I am concerned. I've been there, yes, I've been there quite 30-some years, but this, what this is turning our neighborhood into and the house that's right immediately next to that facility, if you look closely to the right of this house right here, there's a grandmother with grandchildren in that house right there. She has a son that's an invalid, okay? Of course, she's renting, and her landlord had let her know about it, but where does she go from there with that type of... With that type of, this facility on both sides of the street, and then across, uh, Cable Avenue, you have some more of, of, of this, um, this facility right here. So like the speaker prior to me said, I'm, I'm asking the planning commission, even if it's going to City Council, uh, it is enough. We are dumping ground now, okay? Who's gonna buy in that vicinity of, of area with this, with this, uh, with these type of, of, of conditions, uh, parolees or whoever, for good or for bad, whatever? And hopefully, many of them lives will be changed. We do hope that, but for right now, uh, their future, it look like we stuck with that right now. What they're gonna be is yet to be determined. So I'm asking this commissioner, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Name is Michael Nettles, at nine 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 Cottonwood Street. And I'm here just to voice my opinion on the situation at hand, and, uh, I think it's just a bad idea, you know? For, you know, years, the North End has been just dumped upon, you know? And I just don't think it's right for us to have to bear the burden of something like this, another facility like this, when we already have one in our area. And I just feel like, you know, we're just disregarded, you know, as a neighborhood, the whole North End is just, just being dumped upon, and I don't think it's right. And I just feel like there are other places in the city that can absorb this, uh, this, this, this project and give us a break since we already sacrificing and doing what we're doing. So I would just think that they need to rethink what they've already proposed and just pick another location, you know, because we already have something in our facility, and I don't think it's right for the kids, and like she said, like he said, the gentleman earlier said, that house, you know, has, uh, you know, a concern, you know, with the young kids and what have you, and I just don't think it's right to open up another facility at this time in our neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing.
Hold on.
Uh, Mr. Jeans? Mr. Jeans? You had some negative comments about your project, so, uh,
Hello.
mainly being called the halfway house and also your, uh, discussion with the parole officers, so, uh, what can you say?
As far as the parole officers go, no one is mandated to be at the House Center. They volunteer to come there. They go through an application process. This house right here, uh, the lady that, um, she actually flagged me down, said she was gonna sell her house. If you flip back to the other picture of the, of the facility, not that one, that's my neighbor to the north. One more, one more, right there. Her sons, one of them was born in the house to the right, the other one was born in the house to the left, okay? And she flagged me down and said, hey, um, would you be interested in having this property? I've seen what y'all have done my whole life since I've been here. Uh, really proud of what you're doing, and I told her, yes, ma'am. We're not planning on making that into a halfway house. We just bought that house, uh, as a buffer, if you will. If you go back to that blue house, now, that's, that house there, Ms. Johnson lives actually on the other corner with the invalid son. Her son, um, has actually contacted me, uh, because when we build the facility, we're gonna take one of the houses down across the street, if you flip back to the white one on the corner, don't, one more. That house is coming down, and that's gonna be parking. Uh, her son, we're gonna let him have that house, and he's gonna move the house, Ms. Johnson's son. So we're not looking to expand anything. All we're looking to is on the facility that we've already been approved to build, set of a two-story, make it a one-story, uh, for better aesthetics. As far as the, the drugs in the neighborhood and stuff like that, um, um, there was a lady that her, uh, car washed on Magnolia, had her Coke machine stolen. She contacted me to look at my cameras to see if I could see anyone over there stealing her Coke machine. So people in the neighborhood do know that we have security measures in place for everybody around in the neighborhood to keep it a safe place. If you notice on that telephone pole, there's two security lights that we pay for. There's also more in the parking lot, and there's also more on Cottonwood Street that we pay for too, to keep the whole neighborhood lit up. So over the last thirty-two years, we've taken every measure with the, with the neighbors in mind to keep them safe, uh, uh, and do the best that we can for the neighborhood. Uh, we're not looking to expand. Uh, we're just looking to have a better quality, uh, facility for the people and the aesthetics of the neighborhood is all we're looking for.
Mr. Jeans, how many times have you had complaints that the police had to come out to your property?
I've never had any direct complaints, the police coming out to my property. I haven't pulled the police records. I would say I've been there almost fifteen years, and two times the police have came there to serve warrants on guys that have lived there, but they contacted me, uh, and it wasn't for any major crimes at all. We've never had one major crime at all come out of that house there. Nothing at all.
No disturbances?
No disturbances, nothing like that. No fighting in the neighborhood, no, no fighting in the street, or nothing of that nature at all. Period. Zero.
All right. Any questions for the gentleman?
I've got one. Do you actually, have you already purchased the property?
We've owned this property for quite a long time.
Okay, you're just talking about now developing it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we were approved for a two-story, just as far as aesthetics. We wanna go to a one-story. That's all we're wanting to do. And so we're actually losing square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we heard from the applicant, we heard from the staff, and also, uh, the neighbors, and we had the rebuttal from the applicant. With that, I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Mr. Senegal, opposition. Okay, thank you. The ayes have it. We're gonna go to, uh, PZ two zero two three three five one.
Richard Gilbert requests approval of an SUP to allow an event hall to be located at six ninety Orleans Street. They intend to host events such as weddings, receptions, anniversaries, birthdays, and more. The hours of operation will be from twelve PM to midnight, and we'll have seven employees. Security will be present at each event, and all food will be catered. Off-street parking requirements are exempt from development in the Central Business District. An event hall will naturally bring people into the downtown planning area, which could bolster economic activity and aid in efforts of revitalization. It should be noted, a stop-work order was issued April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three by Building Code staff.
Can you stop for a second?
We're gonna ask that you take that outside, please, so that it doesn't, doesn't interrupt the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, please.
It should be noted, a stop-work order was issued April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three by Building Code staff for the addition, addition of a deck to the west side of the building protruding into the parking lot. For compliance, a building permit and inspections will be necessary to obtain for the addition. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire code requirements. Number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow and pretreatment and/or fog program. Number three, must obtain a building permit and complete all necessary inspections for the addition. We sent twenty-seven property owner notices, received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, this is the zoning map. It's completely surrounded by Central Business District zoning. This is aerial photography of it. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Subject property continued. That's the parking lot on the backside. That's also the deck right there. If I can get the mouse to work right there. That's also the deck right there, um, that would need the building permit. Property to the south. Southeast. East. North and northwest. And to the west. I believe the applicant is present.
So he had a permit to do what again?
So he received an SUP, um, I believe it was twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two, um, for the two stories above, um, for luxury lofts, and then the first floor is where they want, they're proposing the event hall.
But when he had the SUP, did he have a building permit?
I don't believe at the time. I don't.
And he built the deck without a permit?
I'm sorry?
And he built the deck without a permit?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the lady? Great. Mr. Gilbert? Good afternoon. How are you, sir, today? Would love to hear from you. Give us your name and address for the record.
Richard Gilbert, forty-six oh six FM nineteen sixty, Houston, Texas.
Tell us what are you about to do?
Well, we got an SUP for, like, uh, Demi was saying, for the top level, and what we wanna do for the bottom level. It was a commercial boutique shop used to be there, but now leased it to a new tenant, wants to do an event hall, which would be for weddings and receptions, events of that nature.
You don't have a good record of following rules, do you?
Oh, yes, I do.
I mean, why would you build a deck without a permit?
It wasn't me.
Oh.
That's a tenant, and they already removed that deck, 'cause I already told, 'cause they haven't completed their per, permit as required. That's a tenant. I don't build anything without a permit.
Okay. And you have a lease with that tenant?
Yes, sir.
And you're gonna do a event hall, right?
No, a tenant. Not I, a tenant, rent the building.
You're renting the, you're gonna get a, uh, SUP to rent the building for an event hall?
Yes.
Okay.
But you still have lofts above?
The plan is to still build the lofts.
So they aren't built?
Not at the present.
Okay.
And that's not a part of this, Demi, is it? Okay.
Are you, are you building or are you reconstructing the, the building?
It'd be a renovation.
Is the event tenant the same one that failed to pull the permit?
No. The building has got, like, three different addresses.
Do you understand, Mr. Gilbert, the conditions that, uh, is imposed by the city, the three conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good. So hopefully, you explained this to the tenant this time that they need to have a city permit, right?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Uh, I don't have any questions. Uh, Mr. Get, Gets, please.
Actually, how it works, the, uh, the tenant, if they choose to move in the building, they'll be aware that all the sub-tenants on the ground floor, floor, and what their business is about, and if they can't stand the noise or don't like all the traffic that may come from the commercial business at the ground level, they have a right not to lease the, the spot. That's their choice.
Just have to like loud music?
Yeah, well, like anything else, you got certain people wanna be near certain things. You got certain people that don't wanna be near certain things. It's their choice. Freedom.
Do you have questions? Anybody else has any questions under commission? The city council? Great. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see where we go from here. Let's open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so, uh, we close the public hearing. Uh, what, what did this used to be before? Boutique shop?
I can have someone check into the CO. Um, I believe it would have been a shop before, but I can verify it.
No problem. Okay, thank you. Uh, we heard from the, uh, city and also the, uh, the applicant. There is, uh, no public opposition to this, so, uh, uh, look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve two Z, two zero two three three five one with conditions.
Second that motion.
We have a motion to approve, uh, the case with the three conditions, uh, imposed by the city. Uh, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. All right, let's go to, uh, three five six.
Richard Gil.
Go ahead, please.
Richard Gilbert of GP Realty and Management is requesting a specific use permit to allow construction of a multiple-family development located at seven oh four Nature Street. The three-story building will contain twelve units to be leased at market rate. It should be noted, off-street parking requirements are exempt from developments within the Central Business District. Residential uses in the downtown planning area may bolster economic activity by increasing the pedestrian traffic. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building, engineering, and fire code requirements. Number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by wa, water utility and, for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pretreatment, and/or fog program. We sent out thirty-three property owner notices and rece, received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under consideration. This is the aerial photography. Site plan. This is the subject property and south. To the southeast. East. North. Northwest. And the applicant is in the audience.
Great. Mr. Gilbert? I know this is repetitive, but if you don't mind, state your name and address again, please.
Richard Gilbert, forty-six oh six FM nineteen sixty, Houston, Texas.
Fantastic. Mr. Gilbert, tell us what you're about to do.
Well, I would like to get a specific use permit for that seven oh four Nature Street, twelve-unit, uh, three-story apartment complex adjacent to the other townhomes and apartments in that, in that block.
You own those other ones, or?
No.
Do you know if they're occupied or not?
Think they're a hundred percent.
Oh, good. Great, great. Is this gonna be kind of the same shape and look of the other ones, maybe?
Same aesthetics.
And how did you come up with that? Did you do a study that there's need for this?
Well, Beaumont Main should have done a study that many, uh, several people would love to live downtown, but they wanna live in the market-rate apartments, which you guys don't have at the present.
Okay, uh, what, what is, explain to me, why is it that you're saying market rate?
Market rate is different from, like, a HUD pro, project, uh, where subsidized. This is unsubsidized.
Is it ever gonna be subsidized?
Not that I could know of, not under my ownership.
But it's not anything mandatory, right? That's just, it sounds good to say it, right?
But, no, it's not something that's been seeked, not seeking for it to be subsidized. So you have to seek, uh, if you want a property subsidized, before you develop, you have to get approvals and seek for subsidies.
Good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Downtown would need it.
What type of construction? It could be steel or, uh, stick-built?
Stick-built, also with, um, decorative bricks and.
Brick veneer?
Brick veneer, yes, and, uh, hardy.
Do you already own the property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Anybody else on the commission? Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. And look for a motion.
Motion to approve filed PZ 2023-356 with the two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. We're gonna go to PZ 2023 360.
Recovery Council of Southeast Texas, formerly known as Southeast Texas Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, is requesting a specific use permit to allow a substance abuse disorder treatment facility at 380 Main Street. They provide 24/7 60-day program for inpatient and outpatient individuals. The site will host up to 40 clients participating in the inpatient program. All programming will be conducted inside and clients will be strictly supervised. Off-street parking requirements are exempt from the development in the central business district, although parking is provided to the north. The purchase of this property is contingent upon the outcome of this case. Section 28.04.001E of the ordinances state a specific use permit shall be issued if all of the following conditions have been found. Number one, that the specific use will be compatible with and not interest to the use and enjoyment of other property, nor significantly diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. Number two, that the establishment of the specific use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property. The selected site may not be a compatible use due to the number of clients and the lack of open space, the proximity to establishments and events selling alcohol, the proximity to parks and museums, and it is located at the intersection of Main and Crockett Street. Although this is a needed service within our community, staff recommends denial of this request based on the aforementioned and encourages Recovery Council of Southeast Texas to select a more compatible site. We sent 17 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screens, area outlined in red is under consideration. This is the aerial photography of the site. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Subject property continued, that's the parking lot to the north. Subject property continued. Subject property and west. Southwest. South. And to the east. And to the north. I believe the applicant is present.
Any questions for Demi? Is the applicant here? Good afternoon, sir. If you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, please, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Thomas Ardal. I'm the CEO of Recovery Council of Southeast Texas. The address is 4675 Washington Boulevard here in Beaumont.
You understand the staff has asked for the denial of this project. Do you have anything to add?
I, I do understand those concerns. Actually, when I took over this position four years ago, when I left Baptist Hospital, I had my own concerns. I didn't really know what I was stepping into. But over that time, I learned my expectations were completely off. What we do is completely different than what most people understand. We are not a halfway house. We are not something where we treat homeless people. I would say that maybe we indirectly treat homeless people because we treat the regular person. Sometimes a person can run into trouble, but that's not what we focus on. We focus on a behavior health service that focuses on drug treatment. And so what we are doing, what we do is a self-contained operation. Everything's inside. Honestly, individuals, first of all, one of the main concerns was about the number of individuals and the size of the building, everything else. The truth is, we are a heavily regulated industry. We have regulators that come in and inspect us all the time, that measure square footage and everything else. Right now, we have our 40 licensed beds in a much smaller area. So this building is actually much larger, there's much more open space. And so it really is much, you know, much more conducive to what we're trying to do. There's also another concern, asking, or talking about the proximity of selling alcohol. Well, first off, we are not going to impede any of their business. Honestly, most places wouldn't even know we exist. Might change the letters, take up Beaumont Enterprise and put our logo on the front, but that's about it. So anything else, you probably wouldn't even know we're there. And the truth is, alcohol is sold everywhere. Right now, right next to a convenience store, there's people drinking on the front sidewalks of those places as well. So it is not something that really would impede us. It's not something that I think we would impede them. And it's also talking about some of the proximity to parks and museums and things like that. I think that is alluding to a misnomer of who our clients are. Again, we are not treating homeless people. We are treating people from all walks of life. I accept all sorts of funding streams. Some people are very wealthy. They pay with cash. Some people have insurance, their private insurance. Some people have Medicaid. And we do also have funds for those that don't have any money, that we get through state funds. But again, all that comes with heavy regulation, much oversight, and a lot of care is taken in to make sure that we're good neighbors. So overall, I really think that what we're trying to do is really could help the downtown area. What we plan to do is purchase the building and then invest a million dollars into the building to beautify it and preserve it. While the buildings in the, in the local area are really just, you know, they're kind of sitting there waiting to be used. And we found this one building that will work perfectly for us. It meets all of our size requirements. It's strong. It will help us during hurricanes. Our current location got flooded twice. And it's probably the premier substance use disorder treatment facility in this area. It caused a lot of trouble for the local residents because we were not able to bring in more clients during those times of reconstruction. So that's really kind of a huge problem for the area, actually, if we have to do that again, which is bound to happen, right? So really, if we're in a location that is more secure, doesn't flood, won't blow away, it'll be much better for everybody. In addition to that, like I said, we're gonna provide a 24/7 presence. We don't allow trespassers on our property. We are in a very structured environment. We have staff there, like I said, 24/7, security cameras and everything else. So really, we'll help our neighbors. I think we'll do a lot to try and bring more activity in the area as far as just like having a presence there. We'll support the local businesses with our 30, 32 staff that are full-time. And so really, overall, I think we're part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, question for you. You have other facilities. Are you merging to this building or are you expanding into this?
Correct. So we actually, our current property, we have several facilities on our campus. We have, first of all, a large warehouse. We also have an outpatient building with administrative as well. And then we have our in-serve, our inpatient building. So we have those on, all kind of scattered, but we're trying to consolidate it. It just makes more sense for us having better flow of services because a lot of our clients will transfer to outpatient once they're done with their inpatient. And it just makes, you know, for a better, higher quality product. And so we also have outpatient clinics in orange. We're expanding into Lumberton as well. So we're just trying to make, you know, Beaumont is our traditional place where we've always been. Actually, we've been here for 65 years. And the name has changed quite a bit, but we've been part of this community for a very long time. As a matter of fact, our very first location was probably, probably a block away from the building that we're trying to buy right now.
So, because you said that your previous building flooded twice.
Yes.
And so I was like, are you gonna keep that building and you're just expanding into this?
Oh, no, sorry. No, we're selling that. That's part of this whole thing. We actually worked with, with the bank and have our financing line. We talked to Hearst Newspapers, made a deal. They're ready to go if the city allows a special use permit. So we'll be selling that property. We actually have a year before we have to pay any sort of notes on the new property. But as far as like the renovations, I have DARPA funding. I have a bunch of cash, and so we're ready to go.
What are you gonna do with the rest of the properties? This is just a small footprint of what you have, right?
Right. So our current property?
No, the one that you're purchasing.
Right. So the first floor would be housing all the administrative offices and all the outpatient services, right? So there's really a large area that's for that, but also allows for just ancillary things such as group rooms. You need things like maybe art therapy and things like that. So there's lots of options to actually, you know, have space. The second floor is where we would be doing the inpatient services. The third floor, at this point, is just gonna remain vacant, but you know, it's just a, it's an option to.
But the third floor shows the beds in there, right?
Okay, so maybe I got the second and third floor opposite, but they're really the same floor plan.
Okay.
Did you look for any other locations?
For almost two years now.
Okay.
So there's nothing really that's available that works for us. That's part of the problem.
Your size.
First off, we, you know, we're a healthcare industry, so we're heavily regulated. We need to have a sprinkler, you know, sprinkler systems have to be in place. And that's, of course, very expensive as well. There's not many places right off the bat that has that. We need something that's, again, gonna be stable, secure, and in place. From what I understand, that building is actually an evacuation place for when we do have hurricanes. So I know at that point that it can be used, you know, 24/7, all, every day of the year. So it'll be very secure for us. I've looked downtown, other places. A lot of things are dilapidated, of course. We looked at buying an old school building on, over on Pope Street. That deal fell through for other reasons, and we've been looking for a very long time. There's just nothing available.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna, yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Where is your existing location?
4675 Washington Boulevard.
That's the building flooded. On the other side, across from the food restaurant? It's pretty close to-
Scooters, by next to Scooters.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? We're gonna close the public comment. We heard from the staff, and they have denied the case, and they recommended denial, and we heard from the applicant, and I would entertain a motion. We have a denial motion, second by Mr. Senegal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Aye. Opposition?
One opposition. Thank you. The ayes have it. We're gonna go to PZ 2023 370.
The Texas Department of Transportation is requesting closure of access to Interstate 10 East Feter Road from 8th and 9th Streets. This request is to facilitate construction of a sound wall barrier between the Feter Road and the Oaks Historic District to minimize impact from the state's I-10 and US 69 interchange project. Traffic will be able to access the Feter Road by way of 10th Street and 7th Street. This item was sent to all interested parties and received zero in opposition from city staff. Planning staff recommends approval of the request. We sent owner notices to properties along Beach Street that are between 9th and 8th Streets. Staff has not received any in favor or opposition. I do believe that we have the applicant in the, or present. On your screens, I'm sorry, on your screens, the zoning map, the area outlined in red are the two access areas that they intend to close. And this is the area in front of 8th Street that would have the sound wall. Area 9th that would be closed. This is looking down Beach Street. And then further from 8th Street.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon. Well, we're here at the last item, I believe, on the ticket, so I'll try to be brief. But my name is Trevor Reed. I'm with Volker Engineering. I'm the consultant project manager here on behalf of Texas Department of Transportation for the I-10 69 North Interchange. So as a-
So you're, you're the one personally responsible for the traffic on I-10, right?
Hopefully, if I get the credit when it gets fixed. Is that a deal or no?
What, eight years from now?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. Got to get started so we can get finished, right?
That's true.
So just going through it in your packet, and I appreciate y'all covering that, as well as the city staff through the whole process. Just a little background history, this project in the schematic form's been around for about eight years and was previously approved with certain sound walls. Through the detailed design process, changes happen. And so we did have some sound wall adjustments and realized some potential safety issues with the interaction of Beach Street between there and the Frontage Road, the Feter Road area. And when you saw those pictures, you saw it was almost like an alleyway, and there's a flush median right there. There's really not room to put a sound wall, but a sound wall was identified as a meaningful mitigation measure for that, that property in that area. So to go through the process, the, we did have a public meeting to update on this with the road closures. That public meeting was back on May 18th of this year, and residents were in attendance, as well was the city of Beaumont and Tex- dot. And at that time, the, the process, Tex- dot has a process with the federal government to send out for votes for those that are impacted, and those came back as a majority in favor. I don't have the exact numbers, but that was the result of the vote. So your process, just to be clear, was a different one for planning and zoning, where you didn't get anything back. And so with that, any questions on the, on the process here?
That you will get started on this?
Yeah, so this project is scheduled to go to letting, to go to construction next June for the Northern Interchange. The way that it gets phased, just because of utilities and everything, they have to get moved. It takes longer. And so it's usually at the end of the project, which is, is four or five years in the future when that sound wall gets built. But it would be a part of that package that goes to letting. Contractors could build it earlier if they chose and they got utilities cleared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, perfect. We've heard from the applicant and also the city. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve filed-
I did not see that in here. I looked for it.
We gotta do that?
Yeah.
Really, I-
No, no, just because it's a joint, and this is the only time they get to address council, it's right. Normally wouldn't, but because it's on the joint, and they get, this is the only time they get to address council, anybody who wants to speak for or against it has to do it today.
Perfect. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we're gonna close the public hearing. And, but really, it wasn't in my notes. I'll show them to you after the meeting.
Make a motion that we approve filed PZ 2023-370. I'm going ahead of you.
Second. Second.
We have two seconds. What do you think? Well, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. One last thing, we have a memo from the planning. Is there anything that we need to do with this?
Yes, I'll just read it off to you guys.
All 18 pages of it, or you're gonna give me some?
No, I will read one and a half and try to summarize it as best I can. Okay, the 88th Legislature enrolled Texas House Bill 14 and 3699. It took effect September 1st, 2023. House Bill 14 adds Chapter 24.7 to the LGC, allowing third-party review or inspection of development documents, including plans, plaits, permits, and related applications, as well as improvements. If a regular, if the city does not approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove a development document or inspection by the 15th day after the date prescribed by Section 212.09 of the LGC, for approval, conditional approval, or disapproval of the document or inspection, a third-party review may occur 15 days thereafter. House Bill 3699 grants the city the authority to adopt reasonable specifications relating to the construction of streets and drainage for sub-streets within subdivisions. Provided however these specifications are adopted by ordinance and published in a newspaper of general circulation, the bill mandates that municipalities adopt and make available to the public a complete written list of all information required with the application of a plat. The bill grants the owner, the owner of a tract the right to bring action and compel a municipality to approve the owner's plat by issuing applicable approval documentation and requires such owner to recover attorney fees and court costs if they prevail. This bill prohibits a city from requiring dedication of a land within subdivision for future street or alleys. within subdivision for future street or alleys that is not intended use by the owner or the tract, unless it is included, funded, and approved in the CIP or a similar plan adopted by the county or the state of Texas. Lastly, this bill allows a governing body of the municipality or the planning commission the ability to delegate one or more officers or employees of the city to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove a plat. The House bills necessitate amendments to the subdivision regulations. Staff is working on those following items. Number one, the adoption of the street construction standards and drainage specifications, so that may be coming before council in the near future. Number two, address changes to future street expansion limitations. Number three, amend the subdivision regulations to conform with the new laws enacted by the Texas State House Bill 14 and 3699. You guys will receive amendments here soon for review, hopefully before November.
So basically, this gives more options to the owners, right?
It does. It limits the plating portion that the city can govern. But with the ability to adopt the specifications and drainage specifications, we will be able to move forward. One of the biggest things is the 3699 House Bill. It alters our ability to really plan for the future. As, for example, there is, you know, any extensions. If a owner owns a property to the north, they can, and we want to, we want to actually extend or have plans to extend a arterial street. If they own it and they do not will it to become a street, they can change those plans by right.
Well, you still have 15 days, right?
Got 15 days.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, my fellow commissioners, and thank you, the ones that sat here and humored us. And Mr. Mayor, we beg you for letting us go home. Man, oh, man.